Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for joining us today. Today is Monday, August 28, 2023, and we are here in the conference room of the Commissioners in the Laramo County Administrative Services Building in Fort Collins. Today, we're here for a working session with our Community Planning Infrastructure Resources. I'm Laramo County Commissioner Jody Scheibnelli, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, and I welcome you all to join us today. I'm joined at the conference table by my colleagues, Laramo County Commissioner John Kafalas and Laramo County Commissioner Kristen Stevens. Also at our table is our County Manager, Loretta Volker. So I will now turn this over to our Director of Community Planning Infrastructure Resources, Leslie Ellis. Thank you, Leslie.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leslie Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure Resources Director. And in customary fashion, I'll hand it off very quickly here, but let me do a quick overview of what we have on the agenda. And it's really two primary items. We have the Wayfinding Project update for you from the ranch. And this is really just intended to be an update and for information. We're not seeking direction unless you have questions or comments that you'd like to share. We anticipate this whole item probably with discussion would be about 15 minutes. And then the second item, the co-compliance assessment, will be the bulk of the time today. And we are seeking direction from you for that item. And then Rebecca and I will have some just very brief updates at the end. So with that, I'd like to hand it off to Mark Tinklinberg, who can introduce his colleagues at BHA and Angie to take you through the wayfinding project. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for this time that we can present this. I know it's going to be a quick one, but we'll go through it pretty quickly. I'm joined here with Angie Maluski from BHA, as well as we've got Jason Massaros and Sidney Roller that are both from BHA as well. So they were hired by the ranch to conduct a wayfinding study that was in relation to our new constructed roadways, our infrastructure, and how the general public is arriving at our site and finding their various directions once they arrive. So I am going to pass this over to Angie right away and let her go through her presentation. It's some preliminary designs, really, at this point, and we just wanted to get some comments and thoughts from you all as well at this point. So, Angie?
Thanks, Mark. And thank you, Commissioners, for giving us this opportunity and this time today. I know you have a busy schedule today. So if you'll forgive me, I'll probably be sticking to my notes pretty closely, too, so I don't go over time. But we appreciate you having us, you having us here just to give you an update on the efforts. We're calling it this Campus Sign Master Plan. That's really what it is. We're thinking about how the sign system will work for the new campus and the future of the campus moving forward. Our approach has really been to build upon the successful elements and the signs that are existing there that have really helped define the character of the ranch. To the left, you can see some of those signs and that character, but also to change the elements that need updating. These have been in place for quite a long time now. And also to expand the sign system to support the future uses and the new technologies that are planned for the campus. So there are lots of layers of signs and wayfinding through any campus, and the ranch is no exception. So the goal is really to create a comprehensive family of signs that are consistent and clear and logical. We've been really focusing on ADA and accessibility, visibility to the signs, allowing for flexibility of messaging, and then incorporating new technologies as well. And I think a key understanding is really that simply adding more and more signs is not always the best solution. So we ideally will have fewer signs, each with purpose and clarity. And then lastly, we're really thinking about the experiences, Mark mentioned, of each visitor as they approach the campus and then move through the campus. And where are the best ways to convey information at key decision points and thinking about travel speeds and exactly what information is needed to make those decisions, first at driving speeds and then at walking speeds? So your master plan, as it's developing now, has primary vehicle circulation around the outer edges, the perimeter. And then moving in, there's a ring really of the parking, the larger parking fields. And then moving in further, the buildings and the campus core. So supporting this, the signs will have several sign types as well, each with a different function. We'll have high-speed campus identification along I-25, which is along the top of the slide shown in green. And then key vehicle entrances around the campus, especially on Fairgrounds Avenue and Andalusian Drive. And then once you've entered the campus, along Arena Circle and in the future, the Showring Road will have directional signs to get you to the right parking area. And as we move even further in, we now have this opportunity, where the old alignment was, to have this great pedestrian way that's between the parking and the buildings on all sides of the campus. And we're calling this the promenade. We can really begin to provide more wayfinding detail and really focus on those walking speeds as people are out of their car and moving to the gates and the core of the campus. So with this, we're really developing, this is a compilation of family of signs that, again, both use some of the existing signs that are there and very functional, as well as creating new signs for the master plan. So in the next few slides, I'm just going to walk through each of these families of signs and a little bit more closely what their function is. And I'll start first with that I-25 frontage on the top of the slide. So the key element in the frontage, as you know, is the marquee sign. And we've been studying this, the location of that sign is still very effective in terms, even with the new improvements on I-25. But it's currently too small, and it has a much older reader board technology. It was one of the larger signs that was done at the time it was built, but not anymore. So the plan is to make this sign taller and more prominent with a more prominent digital reader board with newer technologies. And that's shown with the green asterisk on the plan. And then, as you know, the Equinox sculpture will be relocated to the I-25 frontage just north of Embassy Suites. It's shown with the blue star. And then to help further identify the entire campus along I-25, we're considering these regularly spaced monuments to really just simply mark the boundary of the ranch. Those are shown in yellow. This is pretty hard to see. It's kind of an aerial view. Again, the markers along, the blue asterisk for the sculpture, the Equinox sculpture, and then the marquee sign in the distance. But here's a closer view, again, of how this, the newer marquee sign will be viewed, driving speeds from I-25. And you can also see the markers here in the front and beyond. And then how they might appear at night. We're exploring even if the markers could be lighted at night along with the marquee sign. Next, we have the vehicle entry points. So to the right, into the lower right, we'd like to keep these existing gates and the columns with the logo. They've really created a character for the campus. And we'd add more similar ones at new entrances along Andalusian as they're developed. And then the larger, again, to the right, the north entrance to the right, that's the previous main entry sign. We're considering keeping the columns on both sides and the sides on both columns, but removing the glue lamb arch so it doesn't feel like the main entrance to the campus. And then over to the left, as you know, the Arena Circle entrance, that new intersection, is quite large, and that'll really be a key entrance for the campus. So we're showing a very similar entry feature to be added there with the columns on each side, a little bit larger scale to fit the scale of that intersection. And we are even looking to exploring an overhead arch potentially there as well, and those markers coming in Arena Circle that could be lighted at night. But we do, we need to seek approval from the City of Loveland for the arch and the lighting, because this is a public street in the City of Loveland, a public right-of-way. And then to the north, the new signalized intersection at Andalusian Drive is another great opportunity to add a campus ID marker. We could have sculptural pieces there and even maybe changing exhibits to support different events that are happening. And then moving next, once visitors have entered the campus, the next level of signs really need to help direct them to the right parking area. So these happen really along Arena Circle and the new Showring Road in the future. And here, directional signs will really help to guide the visitors to each parking area. And we'd be doing improvements to those signs and having new locations for them. We want to be sure they're very visible, much more visible than they are today, in the right location, and to allow for some branding and sponsorship opportunities. And then once visitors are parked and they're moving toward the building and the gates, we can use, again, that promenade area as you get closer to the buildings. It's a great place to first guide them to the correct buildings, to the right gate, but also to highlight events. Here, people are at walking speeds. We can give them more detailed information. We could incorporate interactive displays, maps, and really just begin to create a festive environment as you get closer to the campus core. And then the last few sign types, they exist today and will be integrated into the sign master plan. These include the gate signs. We may consider updating those just to tie into the same color family. And then, of course, the building signs. We'll continue to update those. They'd be updated to support the changes in branding and sponsorship and just to be sure they're very legible. So that's the overview of the sign family that we were considering and that we're working on. And we're here to answer any questions. And again, just wanted to share this update with you as we move forward.
I had a couple of questions. Let's see if my colleagues have questions first. I see Commissioner Stevens has her hand up, and then Commissioner calls his motion. He has a question as well.
Yeah, thank you, Angie. Well, altogether, I like the new signage. I think it's really important to have it. It was a little trickier, I think, this fair, trying to get people to the right place. I had a Fort Collins City Council member like call me to say, "Where am I supposed to go in?" So it's definitely needed. And I like the look of the new signs. I think it, you know, I think updating things and still keeping some of the feel of the ranch, but updating things seems like a good idea. So just have a few questions. On the primary marquee sign that's on I-25, does that, is that in a space that falls under, does that fall under Loveland sign code, or is that an I?
That does fall under Loveland sign code, yes.
So increasing the size and increasing the maybe digital display on that, that still falls within their sign code and the sign code that we adopted as well?
Yes, yes, that is correct. And so this specific sign falls under the PUD that was adopted.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. Then with the Equinox sculpture, is there going to be any kind of signage in front of that? Or that's going to just be the horses and people will make the connection?
That is the design of it now, that it's just the horses and the sculpture itself. We're still under discussions with the City of Loveland on that piece, but yes, it is just for the sculpture itself.
Okay, great. I actually like the signs lit at night, these kind of big post kind of things. That looks, that looks cool. And it might help, some sections of I-25 are pretty dark, so I always feel like anything that can help with that. But are there any night sky guidelines that would interfere with something like that, that we know of?
We would have to fall within the dark sky compliance with any lighting, so even these internally lit, we'd have to be sure they're down directional and meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you. And then I like the idea of removing the arch because, on the one signs, because I do think that there's still that confusion. I mean, those of us who've just automatically gone to Arena Circle, kind of that's, it still gives the impression that there's a throughway there, and so I do, I like that idea. I guess leaving the marquees is fine, maybe it, but I guess as we orient people better, I just feel like there's still some confusion around that. When you get there, then you don't know exactly where you're supposed to go. So I'm glad that the arch theme might be continued, and I don't know if that'll be on Andalusian or the other side, which, what's the other side of that road called? It's not Andalusian. They connect, right?
Andalusian and Arena Circle connect, and then Andalusian and Fairgrounds. I'm not sure which intersection you mean. But we were really talking about this at the Arena Circle entrance, and we could certainly consider that at the north Andalusian Arena Circle entrance as well.
I mean, a lot of people are coming, I mean, a lot of people are coming from Fort Collins, too, to the Fairgrounds. And so, and that's the most likely the route that they would take. So anything we could add to Andalusian, I think, would be helpful with regard to signage. It doesn't necessarily have to be exactly the same thing, but I think something there. And then just one other sign that was confusing as a 4-H leader was that when you came into the, on Andalusian, there was a sign that took you left to 4-H, and I don't know if that's going to continue, that took you to 4-H exhibits. But it said 4-H exhibits in general and didn't just say livestock exhibits. So I think people thought there was like a cut through to the McKee Building potentially, and I don't think there wasn't. So, you know, just, I, some clarification as we, because not every 4-H exhibit is a livestock exhibit. So, and I don't know if that'll continue into the future, but...
It's not planned to continue into the future. That was an interim condition based off of where the construction is at at this time. And so it was confusing, and we did see that throughout, and so we've tried to adjust and make those changes.
Okay, thank you. So otherwise, I think this looks great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Kafalas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mark and Angie. Nice to see you. It's been a while. I think we're heading in a good direction, so I want to affirm that. The input that Commissioner Stevens provided, I think, merits consideration. I think she has good ideas there. And two questions that I have. One is, are we looking to do any of these wayfinding signs in English and Spanish, especially the pedestrian ones? I didn't see anything about bilingual.
I don't know that we've gotten to that level of detail, but I think that's a, especially the pedestrian ones, where we can develop more detailed information. That's certainly a great suggestion, so.
I would respectfully ask that you consider that, please. And certainly, we can learn from the City of Fort Collins, as many of their wayfinding signs in natural areas, et cetera, are in both languages. And I think that would validate the guiding principle that we have about being as inclusive as we can be. And then my second, thank you for consideration. My second question is, so where do we go from here? What happens next? What's the timeline, all that?
So we don't have a specific timeline at this point. However, we are going through the next steps for the I-25 marquee sign that we would look to go through the proper channels through the City of Loveland and move through that permitting and then put that out for construction and to build that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. So overall, I think I like the theme of the signs. I really appreciate the consistent use of sandstone and kind of connects to, you know, the build inside the event center and also to like the Laramo County Campus and believe in this building. And I like that theme of trying to continue that connection. Excuse me, I do agree, one of my questions was, I was hoping we would have some signs in Spanish or at least ability for someone to be able to access information that way. I have concerns about night sky. As everyone's in the room is looking, you know that I have lots of concerns about night skies. So I didn't, I mean, I know it's a busy intersection, but the ranch is one of those few not completely lit places. And we have bees and birds there in the trees, and there's one, it has kind of been there for a while. I know it's kind of a migration area. And so I just want to be kind of sensitive to the major migration days of the year, which I think there's one where they actually ask everyone to turn out their lights, and so I am a little concerned. I do like the color, and I appreciate this, following those guidelines and having it downlit. But would love to keep that in mind, just so we consider how important it is that we're impacting the environment for especially our migratory birds going that way. So I'm wondering about if we have any, when we're looking at using some of these wood products and stuff, are they special locally cross-laminated wood, like some of the wood coming out of some of the, or is it like a product that's coming out? Or what kind of, where's the materials coming from, are those locally bought in mind, or where are the materials coming from?
Yeah, good question. Again, I'm not sure with that, at that procurement detail yet. But we want to be sure that any wood or any materials we use are long-lasting, weather-resistant. So sometimes that limits the type of wood.
To be more like a trucks kind of thing, or?
Yeah, or just, you know, just like your fence cedars, and there are certain woods that are more naturally resistant to rot over time or the way they're treated. But I think what you're maybe also is suggesting that we be sure if we can do things with local procurement that we consider that, and that's certainly an important consideration for us as well.
I appreciate that. And we get some winds in that area, so this other arch, is that metal and?
The concept is metal, and again, we are not certain if we'll be allowed to do that over a public road with the City of Loveland. So there's a little worth there to even have that approved. But yes, the idea there would be, it's a much longer span than the original Arena Circle was with the wood glue lamb arch. So it's likely to be a metal structure if we're able to do that.
And then, of course, I can't help but ask, I see, of course, I love how it looks, but also want to be, you know, we keep preaching about water, and I see a lot of green grass and bushes, so I'm assuming this will be ziriscaped in some way, or?
Absolutely. That was our original concept at the ranch when we helped with that, and that's certainly the case now. I think for these graphics, we tend to show things more green, but they're, absolutely, that would be the case.
That would be great. I appreciate that. No, otherwise, I like the tie-in, and I think also having them consistently throughout the campus looking similar would draw people's eye, like, oh, this is probably an informational thing. And I, you know, for me, coming out and using, have, using all the entrances, you know, during the fair and rodeo, it was easy to go on autopilot. I know it's going to take me a year, so I get that used to that. But, and I want to curious about the entrance over by Embassy Suites, because I use that a lot. And I know a lot of people try to use that a lot, and I know when it comes to like fair and rodeo, it seemed like that they didn't want us to use that. There was a different traffic pattern. So is that going to be something we think about when, for the future? If we want to not mark it as a major entrance and try to get people to use the other entrances, or how does that work?
So we're still viewing how that entrance is used, but then also taking a life safety type of standpoint from it because of we want to be able to push traffic to the designated areas that are meant to be those entrances. So that's really the point at this point, so that we're not creating either traffic jams or creating a unsafe situation. And our, the Laramo County Sheriff's Office has a direct role in how that's being shut down.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that's all I have the questions. I appreciate the presentation and the update. And, and super exciting to learn about some of these details. So thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. I'm joined up here by Amy White, our Code Compliance Supervisor. We're here to present the 2023 Code Compliance Assessment. This is a conversation that's been a long time in the making and substantial thought and effort has gone into this on the part of staff and in our work with a consultant team. And we're very excited to present this to you today. There's a lot of substance to this report and we anticipate that this will be the first of probably multiple conversations, since we may not be able to get through a lot of the substance that's in here until, or in only 30 minutes. So we certainly plan on coming back to future work sessions to follow up on any questions or continue the conversation. But we've kind of focused the conversation in on what the team considers to be either the highest priorities or the key findings from the assessment. So why are we doing this assessment now? The last assessment of code compliance, our approach and our practices was done in 2005. And due to a lot of trends and a lot of changing conditions, as well as the addition of several different areas of enforcement and ordinances, which Amy will cover, there have been, there's been enough change that it's made sense to revisit how we are approaching our enforcement practices countywide. Last year, we consulted, we contracted with Clarion Associates, a local consultant based in Colorado, to conduct their own independent review and to help us identify best practices from Colorado communities. Our staff was heavily involved in that assessment to inform the information, provide context, provide data to help with that assessment. And the analysis by Clarion, their analysis and their perspectives were very helpful. Ultimately, when it came time to produce a final report, we decided that that final production would be best handled by our own team, who has the most familiarity with the context of Laramore County, with the mechanics of how we do our work. And so that's why the report presented to you was written mostly by our own staff. But it was heavily informed by the findings of that consultant team. Well, we, as I mentioned, we won't have time to get into every one of the policy choices and opportunities. I'm sure as you reviewed that assessment, you saw there are many policy questions that we have that we would love for input from the Board of County Commissioners on. We don't intend to walk through all of those today. We've highlighted the ones that we think are most relevant and perhaps most important to discuss upfront. I want to, before I pass it off to Amy, oh, sorry, actually go to the next slide. I forgot the set goals. So our goal is for today, present the report, get your direction on some of these key findings and priority action items so we can talk about next steps and get into some conversations that relate to priorities and trade-offs in terms of how we're using the resources we have. Are we using our staff to effectively meet the goals of you as the county commissioners and the expectations of our community? And if there are changes in level of service or additional services that you would like to see us exploring, there would be resource implications for some of those changes as well. So as I hand it off to Amy, I want to share some kudos for the entire code compliance team who's here with us in the room today. Their analysis, creative thinking and self-reflection has been invaluable. And it really reflects their sincere commitment to serving our community in the best way possible and their commitment to continuing to self-evaluate and improve our practices over time. And I think this whole effort has been a great model for how we review and understand our practices in community development. So Amy, I will hand it to you from there.
All right. Why can't I get it to go?
And Rebecca, I just wanted to make sure this presentation that you're giving us today, we have the, we got the assessment, but did we get these slides? I don't remember.
No, we can provide those slides as a follow-up. And as I mentioned, we anticipate this is a preliminary conversation and we look forward to continuing this discussion, perhaps over multiple work sessions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Amy White, Code Compliance Supervisor. Thank you for having us. So we're going to go through a little bit of our current code compliance practices. We utilize a comprehensive and unified approach, which increases our efficiency, both with the building, the land use, the nuisance complaints that we get, engineering help. We also utilize a cooperative or facilitative approach, since we are unable to ticket folks. And then ultimately, we rely on the court system. We have a high level of collaboration with many of the other departments, agencies and jurisdictions, both within Laramore County. We've recently reached out to the Adult Protective Services. We're meeting with the solid waste folks on Thursday to kind of collaborate with some of the cleanup that we've been doing. So we've really been trying to reach out to other departments, other than the normal ones that we deal with quite frequently. And then, of course, we do the in-depth property research, which increases effectiveness. And really, when we were out looking around, we're doing a lot of what everybody else is already doing. So the peer counties that we were working with were amazed at what we do and the comprehensive nature of what we do. As a reminder, here's that chart that shows, as Rebecca pointed out, the last review was in 2005. We've updated this to now include the short-term rental ordinance that's been in effect for the last couple of years. But it's a really good visual of all the different things we've been asked to do since 2005. Here is a reminder of the inspection areas. Chad has the top, the kind of gold color. Tony's down there in the pink. And then Alan handles the green portion. And then Hannah, our specialist, kind of has cases throughout the county, just wherever the guys feel that they can use the help. So it's a large area that we cover. Here's a comparison of the staffing through the years. So back in 2005, this doesn't include the supervisor position. That's, there's been one all the way through. So this is just the staff piece of it. So in 2005, we had the two inspectors, two technicians. And then, as you can see, it wasn't until 2018 that we got that third inspector and then we filled the specialist position. And then the darker on the right is the temporary position. And 2018 was when the vacation home epidemic up in Estes came in. So that's why you see that increase at that time. And then we've been able, you know, just as a comparison, all the things that we've been asked to include in our enforcement, we've been able to keep the staff relatively the same. Here's another, these are graphs, and I need to throw out huge kudos to Hannah. She was the one that compiled all this data for us. Because you often hear of us talk about it's hard to provide metrics. So these aren't like set in stone. But we thought it was interesting to show you, these are cases opened by year. So it kind of rises and falls. Again, 2018 was the vacation homes. And then in 2020, that purple piece is the damage assessments that we did for the Cameron Peak Fire. So it's not that we worked all those cases, but we were out on the ground in the field, doing what we could to help with that. So, and then it also shows the cases that we close by year. So you hear us often talk about these cases that go on and on for years. Here's kind of a visual of what happens with that. This is another one that shows that same fact. So Alan is the turquoise and he started in 2021. Yet you see him carrying cases over from 2016, which were some of the flood cases. So he's inherited some of my former cases. But that does show you that we tend to carry things over because we can't get stuff closed out. Here's one by average closed to a case. So the first one is rubbish. Then you've got right-of-way, floodplain, land use code. And as you can see, the building is the longest to take, to close. And that's because usually when we go through a case, you do the floodplain issues first. And if you don't get past floodplain, then you don't get to planning. Then you go to planning and get that process. And then building codes are the last to get addressed. Here's one that is by priority level. So as you can see in 2018, that long red line is the building priorities, type B. So that gives you kind of an idea of where we spend a lot of our time. So to the county peer interviews, we did Adams County, Arapahoe, Boulder, Douglas, Jefferson and Summit. And we talked with both their enforcement staff, as well as their county attorneys. And Frank and Andy were involved in some of those conversations as well. The key takeaways from those conversations were that no other county performs the comprehensive research the way we do. Of the ones interviewed, only Boulder County jointly enforces the building and land use codes. Douglas County has deputized their enforcement staff and they are able to issue summons and tickets. And then the other key takeaway for us was Summit County has been recording these notices of violation with the clerk and recorder for building code violations and considers it to be very beneficial to the community so that you're not buying someone else's problems. So of the opportunities for improvement, there's some that are operational that we've kind of already taken under our wings and are doing. And then there are other changes that may require adjustments in staffing or the priority level. Key policy choices, some yes or no questions. And then some choices would require more evaluation to assess the implications that might be associated with those. So the first one we'd like to touch on is the expansion of legal enforcement tools. We've been using county court quite a bit with the short-term rentals and have found that it's fairly effective. Once people get the summons and complaint, they actually come in and start talking to us. So, or we've reached stipulations with them. So we've really been utilizing this stipulated agreement. And it's pursuant to the Colorado Rules of Civil Procedure, this 307D, which allows it to kind of sit with the court. And then if they don't comply with the agreement and the stipulation, then you file a motion to impose the fines and then we can start to collect the fines at that time. So they've signed off on the stipulated agreement and so both parties are signatories. And it's been pretty effective so far. We've only done two or three of them, but they have been effective. And so I think what I'm going to do is just visit on these discussion topics and then come back to them if we could. So should staff prioritize use of the county court system? Does the BCC support the use of stipulated agreements? And should the county consider increasing staffing levels to expand use of these enforcement tools?
Okay, so you want answers from all of us on those questions? So I'll start with Commissioner Kofalas and see if you'd like to answer those questions for Ms. White.
I thought we were going to go.
Oh, you want to? I think if we go through all of them and then come back, that might let the, that way we'll make sure that you guys know.
Be helpful to see the big picture and then come back as time allows.
Okay.
All right, just I'll let you guide the timing. Let me know how the timing is. I'm sure, Amy, you know exactly how you timed this out, so.
So the other, one of the other three priorities that we'd like to talk to today is this use of the clerk and recorder process. As we've discussed, it was developed back in 2010 when Janine Haig was with us. And then we've reviewed it with the county attorneys at this point. And everybody agrees that, you know, what we want to do would be of benefit to the community. It would require probably some additional staff time. We want to make sure that these are verified, that we're not clouding title unnecessarily. So we've been working on behind the scene process on ways to ensure that these are actual violations at this time. So the topic discussion when we come back will be, should the county consider increasing staffing levels so that the clerk and recorder process can be implemented? And then here's an interesting graph. So when a permit expires, sometimes it's referred back. The clerk and recorder process only allows us to do residential and commercial expired permits. So if it's a miscellaneous or a utility, that does not apply to the clerk and recorder. So this is kind of a graph on, the green line is what's eligible for the clerk and recorder. So you can see that there's probably well over, gosh, 150, and this is only from 2010. There's tons more of these expired permits out there that we just haven't been able to get to. And then that top line is the total of the expired permits. So the next one that staff feels is one that really needs some help presently is this addressing illegal businesses. It's a persistent and challenging problem. And sometimes it can be seen as harsh or overstepping that we're possibly closing businesses. But the whole purpose is to be fair and consistent and to level the playing field. There's, we know that there's tons of these businesses out there. We just are struggling with what, what's that right direction? So there's three different categories of these illegal businesses. You know, are there some that have converted old warehouses into woodworking? And now they need all sorts of specialized equipment? So there's some with the life safety issues. Should staff instruct owners to close until the business has been brought into compliance? There's others that don't necessarily have life safety issues, but there's no path to compliance. They're in the floodplain. They, what they want to do doesn't work in that area. So should staff allow those businesses to continue to operate until approval is gained? And then there's some that just simply have no path to compliance. So should staff instruct businesses to cease operations? And of course, we wouldn't say, you need to stop tomorrow. You know, obviously, we would come up with some sort of a compliance where you need to be finished in six months. I mean, some of these have been out there for years and years. So I think at this point, we'll jump back. How do I go back? So our first topic then is to expand the legal enforcement tools. And now this is where we would like your input.
Okay, so let's take it slide by, let's do the slide first. We'll get answers from all three of us. And we'll move on to the next one, because I'm also watching the time. So we'll start again. I will ask Commissioner Kofalas to respond to the three questions, please.
Should staff prioritize the county court system?
I can read it. Yes, thank you. In some, some of these questions, I'm not sure, frankly, to be honest. But I, I mean, all of these, the first two questions are predicated on increasing staffing levels. Is that correct?
Some of it we're already doing right now, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, question number two, I think the, it seems like the use of stipulated agreements is working. And therefore, I would say if it's a, that would be a yes. Question number one. I mean, if you're saying prioritizing the county court system, is that, I mean, the county court system process also includes stipulated agreements. Could you, could you help me understand that, please?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So in the past, we've used mostly district court for injunction, right? So we come up with these stipulations or we say, you need to stop this use immediately. But we really hadn't been using a lot of the county court. And I don't know if Frank has any input on this either. But the county court allows us to collect those fines easier than the district court. So there, there are two separate reasons that you would use county court versus district court. And again, we've been using district court, but we'd like to start utilizing the county court so that we can collect fines and, and have some of these businesses out there that are operating illegally start paying for it.
The other thing is with the, the district court, we have to come to you every time we file a district court case. County court cases, we can just go file those, go seek the penalties, and we don't have to come back and ask every time.
And I think, I think with any of these items, there are, there's some trade-offs. And so, you know, this is where we may need to, you know, come back with more information if you've got some questions on what some of those trade-offs might be. You know, in this case, it's, we this case, it's, we could more consistently and predictably get through some cases, potentially close some cases out more quickly, or motivate property owners to come into compliance more effectively. But it could, it could require more staff time, or it could result in the imposition of more fines on property owners. So there, there's, there are some trade-offs with each of these choices.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
It's hard to have like a yes or no, just because it's, it sounds like it would be a good thing to do. The stipulated agreements seem like they would work. Staffing levels, that's where like, I mean, we want to, and, you know, we, we may be facing a limited budget. And so I don't know how to answer that. And I don't know, will some of the fines that we would collect offset some of the costs that we would incur? I mean, it would be nice to get to a space where some of, if we were bringing on additional staff, that there was some mechanism to help fund that. And so I don't know if that would, you know, I don't know what that looks like, but.
So I did talk with Treasurer Josie about what that looks like, because the court, and Frank, help me if I need some help here, but the court collects the fine, and then they release it to the treasurer's office. And I asked, well, if, you know, those fees were initiated because of code compliance actions, can those come back to? And there is no statute that says that. But what Irene said was that we would ask for it in the next budget. Just keep track of how many fines we did have in that amount, and then kind of offset it that way. So that was the answer that I got on that.
Okay. So I guess I'm a maybe, and I know these were supposed to be yes or no. But I mean, I guess I'd have to have maybe a little more information. Also, you know, it seems like you, you pulled out the three things that you felt like were, would be most effective in addressing some of the problems that you're seeing. So I guess within that set, what's the, what's your priorities? And especially, what are your priorities for, like, if we had to bring on a person, you know, I guess I just want more information kind of of what, what would be the most bang for our buck? You know, what would be the way to offset some of the costs? What, you know, because I, I am for making things more effective for people to be able to do their jobs better, and for you all to be able to address some of the things that we're hearing from residents. I, I think we all want that. It's sort of a matter of how much can we afford, and what is the best way to get there?
And so with the clerk and recorder process, also, when people are notified that they have that violation, and they come in for their building permit fee, one of the other that we may not get to today is asking for a, a fee to be on every as-bill permit that comes in that would then come back to code compliance specifically for that very reason. And that's the hope with the clerk and recorder process, is that that would be what happens.
Yeah, excellent. Now we're talking.
Yeah.
I wonder if with the, with the limited time that we have, Amy's highlighted some of those priorities. Maybe we kind of hit the last couple of slides and see if there are some global feedback to.
Yeah, I'd like to give my two cents first, though, if I might, so I could. So first, I do think the use of the county court system sounds like it's quicker, more effective. And so I support that, because I do, I did, I was thinking every time you have to come to us before you talk about the district court. So I knew that. And so I thought, well, that would take a big step in delay, then you guys could be more effective. So I support that. Because I know there's been a really big backlog, and I see all three of these wonderful, hardworking gentlemen are in the room that are our code compliance folks, and Hannah, who's, who's probably covering all, everything. But I, I just feel like, I know there, when I've been out on ride-alongs, it's like, oh, I see that, but there's just not, there's just too much other things to deal with. So I just, I think that's important to deal with. I do support the use of stipulated agreements. I think if those are working, and that's been effective, that's great. And again, we're just trying to get folks to, you know, compliance or other things. So yes, I know we're having budget considerations, and, but I do want to explore this, because I do think you guys have been doing a lot more with a lot less. And then we see with the increase of short-term rentals and all the other things going on, and there's a lot of folks doing home businesses throughout the county that just haven't followed the right process. And so I just, it just, it's exploding. And so I think it's just not fair. But I do agree with my, I know Commissioner Stevens brought this up, but I was also thinking, this shouldn't be on the back of taxpayers, it should be back, on the back of the people who are causing the issue. And so how do, how do we have it pay for itself, or as much as we can, because, and how do we streamline it so that we make this very efficient and get through? And I do like some of the suggestions that you have. So that's where I'm at on that. So, okay. Commissioner Kofalas?
Just very quickly, before we go on to the next two considerations, it would be helpful to, to look at some revenue scenarios, you know, the sources of those revenues, and how that might, might help offset the costs, at least partially for increased staffing levels. That's, that's one thing that I think I'm reinforcing what these folks have said. And then the second thing, with regard to that third question, it would be helpful for me to know if, if we were to increase staffing levels regarding this type of enforcement, would that, how would that help ameliorate the fact that our, our code compliance folks have at least 500 cases? I mean, would, would this help address some of that? If we were increasing staffing levels to be more effective enforcers, would it help address closing some of these cases? And then maybe these folks might have 400 cases a year, you know, to deal with. That would be helpful.
Yeah. We think that it would help immensely, because a lot of the administrative, the guys are sending out the letters, they're creating the letters, they're doing all these things that really could be done administratively, which would allow them to address some of the bigger issues than they're able to do right now. Yeah.
So I'd like to go back. Are you, did you have any other questions, Commissioner? I didn't want to, I didn't want to.
I'm okay for now.
Didn't want to be disrespectful and keep you from asking all of the questions you need to. I wanted to, I thought it was a good suggestion. I'm not sure who mentioned it, maybe you did, Rebecca, about kind of analysis of pros and cons of each one. I'm sure there are. But I, I mean, I pretty much support it, but it would, it might be nice just to have that. And then just anticipated cost savings, or, you know, like you talked about the, what it could generate, if you're looking at applying these fees, or if you had the ability to do tickets and do fines, it might, it also might be incentive to clear up some of these. So I'm just, I'm thinking maybe a chart, kind of if, and if this, and or, and kind of a flowchart. And I'm sure, I'm sure that's in your head.
Yes, it is. And as far as the ticketing, we had explored that previously and opted not to do that based on advice from the county attorney's office. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I know I've heard from other counties, because I've asked this question. But I do, well, I guess, I'll let you get on to the next one. I did have some questions about the other one you mentioned about the clerk and recorder. So this is the one you want to talk about next?
Right. So the clerk and recorder process, if the folks have, have done the work themselves, then they are assessed a penalty fee. But if you bought it three, you know, the guy that did the work was three houses or three owners prior, then it's just the normal permit fee that the building department. But yet, it takes us a lot of time to get these building permits, the application. We've got to get all sorts of documentation in place. So it doesn't matter if it's the same guy that did the work, or the guy that did it three times ago. It's the same amount of work. And so we would like to impose some sort of a fee on all the as-bills, not just a penalty fee on the ones that the people had done the work. So the clerk and recorder process would allow us to file this notice of violation, and then kind of set that file aside, because somebody's going to buy that property at some point. And again, it's, if there's significant life safety issues, we wouldn't do that, we wouldn't just wait around on these guys, right? But they're ones that are out there that count as a case, but aren't necessarily a priority for us. So it would allow us to document that somewhere and have, have it, so it can be picked up in a title search, which is, because we get all the time, why didn't anybody tell me about this? Well, if it was out there and it got picked up in a title search, contact code compliance, then we think that we would get significantly more people coming in to apply for those as-bill permits, which again, would bring in some more money. And frankly, building funds a lot of what we do, because you can see how much work we do for the building department. So there's a lot of give and take there. So what comes into them can come back to us. So.
Thank you. And I, I hear that story where someone bought something and found out so-and-so never got a permit. I mean, I hear it all the time. So I'll start with Commissioner Stevens this time.
Yeah, I mean, I like doing this. Can you remind me if any of the peer counties were doing this?
Summit County does this. Yep.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, that someone did it. Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it, it, well, it makes things more transparent for the person who's purchasing things. It could bring in some revenue, and, you know, would have, help us get a handle sort of on what's out there. And, and then people wouldn't be able to say that they didn't know about it, right? So this seems like it makes a lot of sense to me.
Commissioner Kofalas?
Thank you. Yes, I, I would preliminarily support this direction conceptually. I think one big benefit, I believe it's been alluded to, is, you know, full disclosure, I mean, folks need to know when they're buying a house, what's the baggage that comes along with that. I think there's something in state law that says if there are mineral rights below, that somehow that needs to be disclosed, or as it relates to oil and gas development. And, and so I think it would be in the spirit of ensuring that people have all the information when they're considering purchasing a home.
I think you can hear that from my comments and questions, that I support that. I think it's important for, for a lot of folks, especially folks who, you know, don't know how to read through all the documents, and there's a lot of surprises. I mean, I've, I've heard horror stories about this for many years, so I really support this idea. So. I just want to do a time check, because we have five minutes, and I didn't know how much time Rebecca and Leslie needed.
Yeah, I, I wonder if we could get to kind of our wrap-up slides here. I know we haven't talked about a couple of these items, but if we could, yeah, if we could go to that slide there. I want to just highlight a couple bigger picture points, and then see if there are any areas of focus that you would like us to have for some future conversations, or which items might be most helpful for us to discuss more in depth as we continue the dialogue. So one thing I want to, want to point out is, you saw the chart that Amy showed of the increasing number of ordinances and scope of enforcement over time. One of the benefits of our approach to code compliance is that it is comprehensive. We've got one team that approaches all, that enforces all of these ordinances. There's a lot of efficiency gained by doing that. But it's not kind of an infinite amount of efficiency that, that we can gain. So there are some other things coming in the future that we anticipate that could also affect kind of how things get prioritized or are bandwidth to continue enforcement at the current levels that we do. One of those is kind of the ongoing short-term rental enforcement. We've already seen an increase in workload as a result of that. We know we're going to need a process, as you discussed recently with Eric Freed in building, to think through how we address unpermitted tiny homes and the as-bill process there. There's a potential for a new option of a grading permit on properties that could result in additional enforcement needs. Outdoor lighting regulations or other nuisance ordinances could increase those needs. And then community outreach and community education is an increasing focus, and our code compliance staff have been really positive partners with other departments, and working with our mobile home communities and other community groups. And that's something we don't want to lose sight of either. If we could go to the last slide. So if we could leave you with a couple takeaways and want to, again, continue discussing, we, Lemer County is kind of, but through an independent assessment, considered a leader among our peer counties in Colorado. But we still have opportunities to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our work, and we will continue to be self-evaluating over time. And it's important that we have these moments in time where we can reconfirm priorities and direction, and make sure we're meeting our community's needs in the best way possible. And as we look at ways to meet those needs, there could be some implications for our resource levels as those needs increase over time.
So I'm wondering, because, you know, we only had a half hour today. I'm wondering, and maybe your quest, can we just have a work session just focused on this? This has got a lot to do, and I don't want to feel rushed. And I feel like all you, all the staff came here today, and I know you guys have full plates. And so I, I, I feel like I need a little more time to have, ask more questions and not feel rushed, because we know we have something happening at the land use hearing. And it would be great just to focus, then we have this information a little bit more. But I think this was a great introduction. But I, I think also, we might, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I think we might want a little more time to ask more questions and think this through. So that's my, my request. Commissioner Stevens, would you like to comment or say anything else?
No, I agree. It seems like we'll need more time to discuss this and think about that, you know. But, but it's a good introductory piece to the information, and read through the assessment, but really, yeah, agree that we, we could use more time. And I think you had mentioned that in the beginning, that we didn't think we were going to get through all this today anyway. So.
Commissioner Kofalas?
Yes, I agree. I'd like a hard copy of the 50-page report, and of course, we get the slides. And then a very quick question, I hope it's quick, and that, not to be answered today. And that is, since we're doing what we can to provide better customer service, be more effective and efficient, and motivating people to do the right thing, have we had any kind of public engagement process? Or is that part of the plan?
We've not done a public engagement process associated with it. It was anticipated that we'd bring these findings to you all, you know, work to refine the report, and then post that publicly online. And we welcome any input, what you think is the appropriate level of engagement.
Okay, thanks a lot, Rebecca. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I know you and, and team, Alan, Tony, and Chad, and Hannah, appreciate, and of course, Frank, everyone else, and, oh, I see everyone. All of you. I know you guys are just working so hard, and there's a lot of complex cases. And I just want to say, thank you, appreciate all your efforts. And I'm, you have to, you have trained me well, because now I cannot run anywhere, hike anywhere, or drive anywhere without saying, I wonder if that's. So anyway, I won't ever look at things the same way again. So I, I just want to say, just, I appreciate all the things you guys do, because I know a lot of times you go into some complex situations, and I just want to express my gratitude. So thanks.
Thank you. So with that, I guess we'll find another time. I'm told the end of September looks promising. So hopefully, we can come back and visit this sooner rather than later and, and get going on it.
Sounds great.
And I just have one 30-second quick update, and that is to introduce a new staff member that we have on board to help with the water plan. And that's Danielle. She's sitting over here. Rymanis?
Rymanis.
Rymanis. I've been working on that pronunciation. So I'll hopefully get that right soon here. Say it again, please.
Rymanis?
Rymanis. Yes. So she will be helping us with a lot of the logistics around the water plan. And then shortly this week, we'll be sharing with you some of the engagement lists and groups that we want to make sure we include, so that we can capture your ideas too, and make sure we don't miss anybody. So that's coming your way soon. And that's all I have for today. Thank you very much.
Rebecca, did you have a quick 20-second update?
No.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all. Quite the informative and interesting session today. At 2:32, we are adjourned. Thank you.